Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the McComb Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Today is October the 3rd. The time is 7:04. Thank you for your forbearance in letting us go a few minutes late here. I'm calling this meeting to order, and the first item on our agenda this evening is the roll call. Ms. Lawson, could you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Member Tuckfield?
Here.
Member Slosson is here. Member Piper?
Here.
Member Posey?
Here.
And for the record, David DeCosta is absent tonight.
Very good, and Mr. DeCosta did call me, and he did indicate that he would not be able to make it this evening, so he is properly absent and excused. With that, we'll move on to item two. If you could all rise with me for the Pledge of Legions, please.
At Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that takes us on to item three, which is approval of the agenda items with any corrections. I'd like to note before we move to this item that several people had inquired if we had items that were not on the publicly advertised agenda. Specifically, there was some concern that there may be a rezoning that was being heard tonight. I just want to make mention that we are not hearing any rezoning requests tonight. It's not something that's within our purview, so if you're here for that item, you're more than welcome to stick around, but just be aware that we are not going to be dealing with that at any point this evening. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for any motions or on the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Posey to approve tonight's agenda.
Support.
Support by Ms. Slosson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay. That item carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. Those would be the minutes for September the 5th, 2019. Are there any motions or corrections on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, there was one item that I came across that needs correction, as Chairman Tuckfield took roll call, and actually it was Member Slosson, and it said that Member Posey was absent and excused, and she was actually present.
Very good. I also had one on the header for the pages. We have September spelled with an extra E, so if we can take care of that, that would be good. All that said, I would entertain motions for the amended minutes for September the 5th.
I would move to accept the accepted, or the correct excuse minutes for September 5th.
Motion by Mr. Piper to accept the corrected minutes.
Support.
Support by Ms. Slosson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. With that, we move on to old business, which I believe this actually should be in new business, something I didn't catch with the agenda. Item 5A is a variance request from the zoning ordinance. We've got two different sections of the zoning ordinance that are being requested. A variance for 10.1603B33A, which regards the setback of a service window or call box for a drive-through to a residential area. The second one is for 10.1605G, and this refers to a six-foot wall adjoining a residential area. The permanent parcels are 2008-22-200005, 2008-22-20014, 2008-22-20015. The petitioner is Fadi Oscar. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing that correctly, but potentially not. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Maher for his review on this item.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask for two seconds? I evidently grabbed the wrong packet off of the counter when I walked in at the planning department, so I apologize.
No problem.
Literally take two minutes.
I just want to thank Mr. Maher. For the record, we had some late absences of other support members for the township board, and Mr. Maher was able to make the meeting unexpectedly, so we appreciate him coming last minute. It's not always easy to fit these things into one's schedule unexpectedly. I mentioned this while you were on, Mr. Maher, but I just want to pass on thanks for coming so last minute. I know this was not in your schedule for this evening, so thanks for being out here tonight.
No, I appreciate it, and I apologize. They had a stack of stuff they wanted me to review, and then they had a stack of ZBA stuff, so obviously I grabbed the wrong stack, so...
If you don't have it all in here, I can give you my packet, and Kristi and I can probably share one.
Nope, it's all right here. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're on the parcel at 23 and Card, the first variance request.
Or maybe it's not all here, Mr. Chairman.
Here. I'll just give you my packet.
Okay.
And Kristi, I'll just show them. This is the one we're on.
All right, thanks.
This is the cool one.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I apologize to everyone. I typically don't work with the zoning board of appeals anymore, but it's nice to see all of you, and wonderful to see all of yous, so we'll do what we can to get through this tonight. Anyway, the applicant's requesting two different variances tonight, and the first variance is to section 10.1603B33A, and that requires a 300-foot setback of a service window or a call box for a drive-through. The applicant is proposing a setback of 150 feet from the property line and requests a variance of 150 feet. The second variance is a variance to waive the requirements for a six-foot concrete wall. I will say, with regard to the setback variance, the applicant indicates he does have a practical difficulty. They have a very unique situation in light of the fact of the river going, separating the development from the residential. They actually average about anywhere from 250 feet to 390 feet from any of the residential behind them as a separation from that call box. I think based on that existence of the floodplain and the inability to develop anywhere near it, I do see a practical difficulty there. With regard to the variance for the wall, my concern with giving a variance for a wall has more to do, less to do with the visibility that it'll provide, because you have a lot of scrub and a lot of tree cover in that area. Even in the winter, it's very difficult to see through that area. But my main concern is the blowing debris you get from a commercial site, and whether or not you have dumpsters all over the place, or whatever, garbage cans all over, you still end up with a lot of debris on commercial sites, and that will end up blowing into the drain area, and quite frankly, will cause issues just from a aesthetic standpoint. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maher. Is there any questions for Mr. Maher from the board? Seeing none, I will open it up to petitioner. If you could name, state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
My name is Bill Thompson from Lehner Associates. I represent Fadi Oscar this evening. Yeah, do you want me to run the slides?
Go right ahead.
Okay.
Let me know when you want me to switch.
Okay, you've, can you see the slides on your screens?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. The property's located, Zone C2, located at the intersection of Card Road, right in north and south, and 23 Mile Road, east and west. The quarter piece is Busheimi's Party Store. It's been at that spot for several years. Previous to that, it was BB, liquor, before that. Well, going way back, back, the building was built in 1970. It was Frank and Mary's Farm Market, and previous to that, Frank and Mary used to sell things out of a trailer there. So Fadi has asked, had this property for several years. He purchased the old landscape yard a few years ago, and then recently, he purchased the property next door, so he has everything from the drain to 23 and Card Road. He has the whole parcel. Okay, can I flip Pat? Another one. This is a proposed site plan. The existing building is right there. You can pretty much tell when they widened 23 Mile Road and Card Road, his building's going to be right on the, you know, real close to the intersection. And he, his plan for that, he knew this was coming up, so he purchased these other properties to try to get a complete package in here. What he's proposing is a party store, gas station here, three commercial units here, those will be built very soon. Site plan's been submitted, and in the future, he's looking at a proposed possible drive-through there and commercial building down here. The first variance is respected, the 300-foot setback. That's where the 300-foot setback line would go. Just barely clips this building and does this one. If we reduce that to 150, all the buildings, all any drive-through areas are eliminated. Pat, could you go to the next slide? Okay. This is just the site plans who are proposed upon the existing aerial, and there you see Fadi's building, and there you see the old landscape yard, and the residence that Fadi bought a little while ago. Next one, Pat. Let's go back one, back to where we were. The distance from the residences here, from there to there is about 248 feet, about 250 here, and again, 248 here. This, although it's all floodplain and can't be developed, is still zoned residential. So the ordinance requirements would have to be met from this line right here, and that's why we end up with a setback, with a setback that goes over, over in this area. Okay, okay, do the next one now. And you can see the setback line, the proposed 300-foot line is there. What we're proposing as far as landscaping goes, as far as a wall, we really can't put a wall, you can't put it down the center of the drain, obviously, and this is all relocated floodplain, because there's a whole lot of floodplain on the site. It's really not very deep on the site. It's only about a foot, foot and a half deep, but we have to compensate for it when we build our site. So this will all be floodplain, relocated floodplain, and we're proposing to landscape along here. Now, Pat has a concern about blowing debris, while the wind normally comes from the west, and, you know, the wind would go that way. I don't see that as a problem, but if it's a concern, we could put a chain link fence along in here. That would take care of that. Okay? Next slide, please. Okay, this is, this shows the dimensions. 248, 251, I think, 248 again over here. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, this is on, if you're on Card Road driving south, this is the north bank of the drain. And you can see there's a lot of, there's a lot of growth in here. There's a lot of growth right on the bank of the drain, and there's wetlands on the site, but it's right at the bank of the drain and down the bottom of the drain and back up again. So we don't have to do with any wetlands here, just floodplain. But there's a lot of vegetation right on the bank of the drain, and that's pretty much going to stay. This is, again, this is on Card Road looking south. Okay, yeah. And this is on Card Road looking north. You can see all the vegetation in here. Now, nothing's going to happen to the existing vegetation that exists on the residential property, on the R1 zoning property. Again. Okay, this is on 23 Mile Road, and right here is the drain. This is our corner, and you can see the length, the, along the south bank of the drain, and see all the vegetation in there. One more. And this is looking the other way, going eastbound on 23. This is where the residence is, and this is the north bank of the drain. Okay, and just for heck of it, one more. Okay. You can't really see it. We've got a township truck in there. So that's, that's the way the situation sits right now. We're requesting the variance for the setback, and it provides, as it is, if we have 150-foot setback from the property line, we'll have over 400 feet from the nearest residence. And the screen wall, concrete screen walls, seems like overkill to a certain degree. If we put a screen wall at the top of the bank of the drain, it would be a little, it could be a little bit unstable, because it would be at the top of the drain. Having plantings in there, and even if we have to put a chain link fence in there, that would, that would suffice. So if you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer them.
So any questions for Mr. Thompson from the board?
Chairman, Tuckfield, I have a question for you. So all that vegetation that you showed in those photographs will remain, none of it's being removed?
No, the, on the north side of the drain, it will be removed.
Okay.
Except for the, right along the edge of the drain itself, and that's where most of the trees, that's where, there are trees there. There are other trees on the site that will be removed. Pat, would you go back to like slide number two?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand that everything between the buildings and the residence remains.
Which one? Right there, okay. You can see that there's not very many trees in here at all, and this is where they had the landscape yard. There's some piles of dirt in here and stuff. There are trees along the bank of the drain, and there are trees along the bank of the drain here. These trees would, would be taken out. Some of the trees around that building would go, but the trees that are right on the bank, for the most part, they would stay. We'd have to clean a couple of them out, because we have to allow the water to flow back and forth from the drain into the, into the floodplain.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson?
I think he actually answered it. As far as the concrete wall, if you put it right there on that line?
Yeah.
There's a problem with it, with the stability of the wall? Is that what you're saying?
Couldn't guarantee it. You'd like to have, you know, 10 feet to put a wall on, but we'd be putting it very close to the top of the bank.
And what would prevent you from bringing it closer to the...
That's where the parking lot starts.
So if I, if I follow this correctly, you can put the parking lot to a point that you can't put the wall at?
No, there's room for a wall. I mean, we could, we could put a wall, but I wouldn't guarantee its stability. The trees would be fine, and if we put a shame the fence up there, we'd be okay.
Okay, very good. Any other questions?
I have a question for Mr. Maher. It might be more legal than anything, so do your best.
Put my legal cap on.
Could you just turn your hat, please? So if, since our ordinance requires the, the concrete wall, and if we deny this variance and they put the wall up and the stability is questionable, who does that fall on?
Well, you know, it'll always go back to them for maintenance of the wall. You know, the question is, is it beneficial if it's continually cracking, because it'll be a continuous battle to keep it in, you know, proper condition? You know, I, I think one of the questions, you know, that I would, I'm not sure the wall is necessary for the screening aspect. You know, I wonder if we can get something in terms of a vinyl coated chain link fence that would blend in with the, with the environment a little bit better than, you know, perhaps a standard metal chain link, galvanized metal? So, you know, perhaps if we had something that was a brown chain link coated, or a black or green, you know, something of an earth and color, it would stop a lot of the garbage from going through, and I agree with Mr. Thompson. You know, we do have a primarily a west to southwest, standard wind pattern, but along the same lines, garbage goes where garbage goes, and it is going to end up all over the place, so I think there needs to be something to prevent that from going into the drain system on a regular basis.
So another question would be, would you agree that the intent of the six-foot concrete wall to separate commercial and residential is to give some type of sound barrier? Is that part of the intent for that?
It's to give sound, it's to give, you know, again, the pollution, it's also to prevent light from shining into the surrounding properties.
So in a situation where we have all the landscaping that is between the two, it would, that would, that could suffice for the same reasons that we would require a concrete wall?
I believe it would in this situation, and you could definitely leave it, you could add it as a condition that there be some type of barrier and make sure the planning commission addresses that during the site plan aspect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Slosson.
I'm not sure, if, if they had to put the concrete wall in, would that mean that all of the trees and the things that they're currently saying that they would keep, would those all have to then be removed, and thus, all there would be is just a concrete wall?
You know, from an engineering standpoint, which I can be very dangerous trying to endeavor into, I would tell you through some of the projects I've worked on where we have done walls where it's not totally stable land, we've had to do some step, step foundations where we have to go a lot deeper into the property, and we have, we have had to excavate more of the landscape, natural landscape out in order to put it in. So it could have a more significant factor on tree removal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? With that, we're going to bring it out to the public. I'm going to open the public hearing on this. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
Okay, my name's Kevin Birch. I live at the property that's 242 feet.
That one further.
From, yeah, that one. So I guess I need to understand, if I'm 242 feet, why is he looking for 150-foot variance? I don't understand maybe the terminology of what he's trying to accomplish there.
So, and this is, normally, we'd leave this to after, but I suspect this is going to be a question for multiple people. Typically, we count the distance from a call box to a residential area as to the nearest residential property line. Your property line is not the nearest residential property line, the edge of the drain is, because it's technically residential property. And so the point that he's trying to make is that he has more than that 300 feet to the nearest residential property because of the, the distance that the drain is taking up. That's why he's giving that measurement there.
Just, I can see that house all year long, so just to clarify that that brush and scrub and whatever is not that thick. So, summertime, or wintertime, you can see it no problem, so don't be illusioned by the, the thick brush there. Also, you're going to have to have some, you're going to be filling in some land, so you're going to be creating another low point to compensate for the floodplain? Where, I need to see on that map where you want to do that, and where would defense line go? Can you flip back to his, his plan?
Okay.
This one, good.
Everything to, towards the drain from where I'm drawing the line will be excavated for the floodplain.
And if, and if we could, and I'm, I'm fine with you showing it to him, Bill, it's, it's how we have to have our process. Generally, we, we have you guys make your comments or ask questions, and then we'll try to make sure that he answers them. I understand it's a little bit ungangly, but sometimes we have difficulties going back and forth.
Yep.
But you're, but you're looking to see where, where his excavation is going to be for that, for that drain line?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, and I can see a property line there, but I don't see the creek, and...
We'll make sure that we, we get, we put that up on the map so that you can see that before, before we're done this evening. And Kevin, if I could, I didn't get your address when you came up.
It's 21585 McKenzie, M-A-C-K-E-N-Z-I-E.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else this evening on this item? If you could come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Yvonne Birch, 21585 McKenzie Drive.
Thank you.
That's my husband. I guess we're not here trying really stopping everything, we're just trying here to understand what need be done, what will be done, so we know what we're facing. I just want to make a comment about the wall, and I understand the trees and shops blocking something, but I have never heard trees and trucks block noise or light. So if the wall is not being built for some reason, then I'm sure we're going to get affected for any kind of business built up there, let alone a call box related business, which would be the drive-through or a bank or something like that. So I would think the noise and the light would affect us. So I just want to make a comment on that. And then also, my husband already asked about this, this line thing, and you told him that you're going to talk to details about it. So does that mean this is only the first hearing for this, for this request? We're going to have more hearing about it?
No, this will be the only hearing.
This will be only hearing, and the decision will be made by you?
Unless the board chooses to table it or postpone it for some reason, which does happen on occasion, but is not necessarily the norm. Typically, we'll, we will make a vote one way or the other, and we would make a decision.
Okay, so your vote will be based on what?
The findings of fact that we come across during the meeting, and that's based on the presentation by Mr. Maher, the petitioner, and listening to comments from the public, which we do take very seriously, and we'll make sure that we follow up on things.
And when will we know the decision will be made?
We probably will make one within the next 10 minutes.
10 minutes? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just so the public understands, we also have a site plan process that we will have to go through as well, and the planning commission will then look at other site characteristics and compatibility.
Very good, and that is, that's an excellent point, and just for the public so they understand, we're not looking at approving the layout of the building, or the parking lot, or any of those items. They're looking to be able to go forward with this parcel and have certain differences from the, the ordinance. So the ordinance dictates what they're allowed to do with the parcel, and they're looking for permission to vary from those standards in two places before they go forward with their, with their proposal. So none of the rest of it is tonight. That would be a site plan process through the planning commission, which is advertised, and people are welcome, and, and that's a further process. So the only thing we're looking at is whether or not the call box can be closer than 300 feet, and if they're allowed to put a wall on the border between, or if they're allowed to not put a wall on the border between the residential and the commercial area, so...
Chairman Tuckfield, just the site plan process that goes to the planning commission, that's where all the details are structured out. So you would be able to join that meeting as well, it's just not this meeting, this tonight, those types of details. Does that help?
Any other questions from the audience tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the ZBA. Mr. Thompson, if you could display, I think he was looking for where the cutout, I mean, you had started doing that, where the cutout for the embankment would be, and I believe there was one other thing, and no, I don't, I didn't, don't think I wrote it down. Anybody else? There was two things I was supposed to, to look for.
It was the cutout and a question about the trees.
Where the drain was. Where the drain is located.
You want to know where the drain was in relation to that?
Okay, very good, yes. Where the drain was on the drawing, I believe that was the other question, Mr. Birch.
Drain is actually the property line. That line right there is where the drain is.
Okay.
Okay.
And the, and the, the lines adjacent to the trees are where you're cutting out?
The area that's got excavated, excavated for the floodplain is the area between the property line and the trees, right in there.
And if you could, Mr. Maher, can you go to the overhead shot, the satellite shot? Might give it a little bit more context.
Let's see if we got a better...
I think that was, well, that was it.
I think that's the only one we have.
The red line is the property line and also where the drain starts, and everything from the red line to more or less where the parking lot cutouts are is where it would be excavated to aid the drainage.
Correct, with the exception of the detention basin, which is going to be in this area.
Very good. All right. Before we go any further, I did have a question, and we talked about this a little bit on the first half with regards to the wall. You indicated you didn't know if it would make sense, and I think Patrick agreed to you to some extent, at least the masonry wall. As you know, we generally have to look for a practical difficulty here. I would generally agree that it may not make sense with the, with the distance, but as you know, we have to look for practical difficulty. I'm not sure that I'm seeing what you're stating as the practical difficulty, so I wondered if you could maybe restate it for me so I could make sure I follow.
I guess a practical difficulty... I guess the practical difficulty would be the stability of the wall. Number one, we, we can't put it on the property line, which is required. The practical difficulty there is in the middle of a ditch, and we can't put it close to that, to the, to the property line because of the relocated floodplain and the EGLE, the new version of the DEQ, wouldn't have a wall anyplace in the floodplain. So that's two reasons we can't put it where it's proposed. So we're, or where it's required. So we're proposing to replace it with screening, and if you want a chain link fence, a chain link fence along the top of the, of the floodplain area. There's always a question when you put a wall near a slope, whether it's going to be stable enough or not. So that's probably the practical difficulty.
Although if it was on the slope, I'm assuming you still could put it there, it just might require more significant earthwork to, to stabilize it. Mr. Maher, if you could, and I know I've, we actually just discussed this portion, I think, a meeting ago, do you recall what our ordinance states as far as the wall? Is it required to be on the property line? Do we have any flexibility of it being off the property line as the ordinance is written?
The ordinance indicates it's to be on the property line. You know, I, I think in this case, we have to use some, some judgment. Obviously, we can't put it in the center of the drain, so we would look for the best location closest to where it's supposed to be. But the ordinance does say it will be on the property line.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, to the strict letter of the ordinance, they can't meet it, and it's about how we define it in lieu of practical circumstances that they would be able to put a wall there regardless of what we were to do tonight?
That's correct. You know, you'd have to look at the spirit and intent of the ordinance and make sure that that's being taken care of through whatever remedy, if you decide to make one.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comments.
One other comment. Is there a reason why a concrete wall can't go where that tree line that they're proposing would be?
I guess the question would go to you, Mr. Thompson. Is there, is there concern putting it there?
The tree line is at the top of the bank, which is where...
I'm talking about where you propose putting the landscaping. Is there a reason why you couldn't put a concrete wall there?
If, well, that's, that's it. That's where the wall would go. Replacing the wall with landscaping, with a heavy evergreen landscaping to act as a barrier, a sound barrier, or a visual barrier anyway, that would be taller than a, than a six-foot wall. But the trees, they'll, they'll be stable there, they have roots, they'll stabilize on that bank, whereas a wall might not.
Bill, maybe you should explain what you're talking about with regard to the type of trees you're planting and the spacing, and you want me to go back to that slide?
Yeah.
You've got...
That's the evergreen trees there. The spacing is, well, again, the spacing has to be approved by the planning commission and the actual screening itself, but we're proposing a dense screening through here. The trees will be maybe 20 feet on center, I'm not exactly sure what it says.
You got balsam fir in there, and black hill spruce, and...
Basically evergreens with a couple of the citrus trees. You see, there's like maybe five in that area, three along here, just to break it up a little bit.
Very good.
Chairman Tuckfield, can I ask, could you, so could you go over again what the intent is of all the properties up there? You mentioned a gas station, correct?
Okay, yeah.
And then?
The party store would be relocated here, gas station here.
And the party store has the call window?
The call window would be over here on the east side.
Of the party store, correct?
Party store, correct.
Okay.
And this is proposed to be, there's six commercial units in here. Eventually, this is proposed, and this is just for demonstration purposes, okay? A drive-through here also.
If, if, if you could, just let, let him speak, if you could.
We don't know for sure right now. There's no, we haven't really marketed that. We're pretty sure we have a tenant in here. And this building right here would be a, we're looking at possibly a swell clinic, some kind of office building of some sort.
Okay, just based on that information, especially my biggest concern would be the gas station. The amount of lighting and the amount of traffic that this area, great commercial-wise, has a lot to offer, but I think it also offers, it's going to be busy, there's going to be a lot of lights required, there's, we're potential of two call boxes. So I think, in my opinion, the reason for the ordinance is to allow commercial to be there, but also to protect the residents from the sound and the lights, and that is the intent of the concrete wall. And with all that activity in that corner, in my opinion, I think the wall is necessary. But that's all I have to say.
Any other questions or comments? I do have one comment, and this is with regards to the green belt, or I should not say green belt, but the separation between the call box and the residential area. I generally think that it makes sense, and I would reference it back to the portion of our zoning ordinance that refers to, I believe, the abutment between industrial and residential. We, the planning commission added and was subsequently approved by the Board of Trustees, an addendum that allows green space that's publicly owned to count as part of a buffer between residential. And I think that between that and knowing and reading the spirit of the ordinance, I think that the, the, the distance between the call box and the residential area is, is met with this, and so I just want to put that out there. I do think it's met, I do think that's the practical difficulty. I will say, before we go to a vote, I, I think I understand the practicality of the, of a vinyl fence. I'm, I'm not sure that I see a practical difficulty for it, particularly combined with the other things we're looking at here. So those would be my only comments. And with that, I'll bring it back for questions or motions. I would recommend, if we make a motion on these, that we make them separately, one for each variance request on this particular item.
Chairman Tuckfield, I'll make the motion to approve the variance to Section 10.1603B33A, which requires a 300-foot setback of a service window or call box for a drive-through.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Posey, supported by Mr. Piper. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That item carries. Is there any motions on the second variance?
Chairman Tuckfield, I'll make the motion to deny the variance to Section 10.1605G to waive the requirement for a six-foot concrete wall.
Motion by Ms. Posey, is there any support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Nay.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay. That motion also carries. Thank you for your time, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work on this item. With that, we'll move on to Item 5B, which is a variance request from the zoning ordinance 10.0311EF3, which requires a pool to be set back 10 feet from the building. This is for, actually, I don't have a permanent parcel number here. The address is 49169 Clinton Terrace Drive. And, actually, I don't have a petitioner here either.
The, the parcel number is 08-21-353-015.
015? Very good. And I think we'll probably see the petitioner here in a moment. Mr. Maher, could you give us your rundown on this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, in this situation, the applicant is, has a 25-foot conservation easement at the rear of their site, and, sorry, I'm looking at the screen here now, but, anyway, in, in order to get a, a pool of, you know, I, I guess of an average size in the neighborhood, they're requesting that they get a four-foot setback variance from the principal structure. The ordinance requires that a pool be set back 10 feet. There's a number of guesses as to why that is in the ordinance, some of them having to do with perhaps kids jumping off roofs and injuring themselves trying to use the roof as some kind of springboard or whatever the case is. Others have to do with kids running outdoor walls and falling in the pool with a limited recovery area, and some of it having to do with more of a practical matter of whether or not it might have an impact on a basement foundation wall. And all of those being said, you know, I suppose the further you separate the pool from the house, the more likely the kid's not going to make the 10 feet, but a little editorial on my side. All that being said, I, I think in this particular site, we have a residential piece of property that's encumbered with a fairly large easement. The, really limits the usable rear yard area to about 24 and a half foot. With the 10-foot setback, we're down to 14 and a half foot for a pool, and typically you want a recovery area around a pool of some type of concrete, so if someone needs to pull themselves out of there, they're not just laying in grass. Whether or not you feel that's a unique practical difficulty with the property, most properties aren't saddled with that 25-foot easement. And I measured some of the other pools in the area. Their pool is proposed at 16 and a half, other pools range anywhere from 16 to 21 feet in width, so, or 22 feet in width. So I felt that the pool they're asking for is not excessive in terms of size, probably on the more limited size in terms of the width. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maher. Petition is present. If you could state your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have.
Amy Gideon.
Wesley Gideon.
Wesley Gideon.
You have to come closer to the microphone.
Wesley Gideon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wesley.
49169 Clinton Terrace. And just to add on to what he said, like, we have the 25-foot easement, and then more onto our circumstances, like, we contacted the township for a variance, and the township was going to give us 13 feet, which is great, we could work with that. And then actually, we have two drains, and the MDEQ own the other drain, and the MDEQ said absolutely nothing. So they kind of trumped the township. So then we were stuck with just the 24 and a half feet, like you said. And then I even asked the MDEQ, can I just have two feet for concrete, because then I could at least get, I think it was a 14-foot pool, and then just two feet of concrete where the easement is in the middle of my yard, and he told me absolutely not. So, yeah, I mean, we're still stuck in the situation. We're going to have to take out a patio, all this stuff, and the pool is going to be relatively closer to our house. It's not ideal, but it's, we really have no other choice. So, so that's why we're requesting the four feet. So then it would be six feet from our house instead of 10. And I promise my kids won't jump off the roof.
Famous last words.
If I could clarify, you were referencing the easements, and I think I know what you're, what you're referring to, but to, to clarify, you're referring to the water and sewer easement along the rear of the property, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, which, for the record, water and sewer typically gives a easement reduction or easement waiver for pools, or they do a lot of times. So it's, it's a different variance than we're referring to tonight. With that said, are there any questions or comments for the petitioner? Hearing none, I will take it out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this request? If you do, please come forward to the podium here and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board for any comments, questions, or motions.
And I'm sorry, real quick, I also have a letter. I don't know if you guys got it from the head of our board, saying that they...
We, we did receive a copy of that, yes. Thank you.
That you're okay with it?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I like to go view the properties, and that drain is quite significantly wide. They're, they really do lose a lot of their backyard because of that, and I do think a practical difficulty does exist for that, and based on Mr. Maher's sizing of the pools in the vicinity and the letter from the HOA, I think it behooves us, I would like to make a motion to grant this variance.
All right. If we could, before we do that, I realized today that I had not seen a drawing of the pool. Did we have one in our packet? The only thing I wanted to see was, and I know that this is something that building looks at, and I assume they've looked at, is the, the pool with regards to any...
I stole your drawing, Mr. Chairman, so...
There is a motion on the floor. Actually, I should take support for it before we go any further. There's a support...
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Posey. I would just want to add that this does not override anything that the building department may require as falls, as far as fall protection with regards to any door walls you have in the back of the house. I know it's typically a building issue, that there's, that's one of the reasons that pools don't go in the back of the houses too near. So we may grant the variance, or we may not, but there has been a motion made and seconded, but I just wanted to make sure that you understand it will not override any other building requirements. It's just has to do with the, the ordinance.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Should we also have them do a hold harmless? Is that necessary?
I know we have in the past. I know that I've, I've spoken with Mr. Assorti and Mr. Maher in the past, and it seemed to be rather a, an odd combination. Either it's too dangerous and we shouldn't allow it, or it's not that dangerous, and why are we asking for a waiver for it? So I think last time, Mr. Assorti had said he was comfortable going without a waiver.
Thank you.
With that said, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Piper, supported by Ms. Posey. All those in favor, please, to grant the variance, I should say. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay.
Aye, I'm, I'm sorry. No, approve, 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 sorry. I just wanted to trick you.
That would be a unanimous voice vote of approval, and thank you very much for coming in. That takes us on to Item 6, which is new business, which I think we technically had our new business and old business this evening. We'll have to make sure we follow that better next time. My apologies on that. Which brings us to Item 7, public comments. I'd like to note for the record, this is for non-agenda items only, but generally, we like to try to keep any comments and non-agenda items to, relatively pertinent to what we're here for tonight. So if anyone has any comments for the board at this time, please come to the front and state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, I will close the public portion and go to ZBA member comments. Any comments from the members? Hearing none, we will move on to Item 9, planning comments. Mr. Maher, anything for us this evening?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment. Number one, nice to see all of you again. Number two, my apologies, I was scheduled to be here tonight. I knew Mr. Assorti wasn't going to be here. I did have a meeting prior to this, so I was running a bit late, and unfortunately was a bit disorganized because of that. So my apologies for that, but thank you for your assistance in getting me up to speed.
We appreciate your time here. We know you've got a lot on your plate, Patrick, so thanks for, thanks for stopping by and helping us again. All right. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, supported by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That item carries.